We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Present.
Councilmember Hawkins? Councilmember Gillen?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
We have a call.
Can we please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the councils shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matter is properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council on call to the public? No, see no movement. We'll close call to the public and turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Woolridge. I was over at the community center having a meeting with some residents and our town manager, so I apologize for my delay and thank you. Item 6A is our town council, teen council update, Mr. David Lewis.
Well, good evening, Mayor Walters, Town Council. Thank you for letting us come out again and give you guys an update on what we have been doing. But I'm not actually going to be talking much. I'm just kind of here to introduce everybody. The teens are going to go ahead and say everything for me. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Mr. Robert.
Hello. In the month of September, we cleaned a one-mile stretch highway on Hunt Highway. We also held two successful holiday events, karaoke and a fooding competition. I was in the fooding competition, but I sadly lost. We also planned and designed the haunted house for the month of October. And here to talk about the month of October is Kayden Clough. Here's some pictures about the kids eating the watermelon for the watermelon competition. Now here's Kayden for the October, the month of October.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the month of October and the events we did as FTC. So we participated in Make a Difference Day, which we painted tables on Main Street and we picked up a lot of trash at the park. Then we coordinated and operated the Florence Haunted House, which was called Azlum. And then we took some of our meeting times out and we built into the, I think it was a town building here in town. But we took time and we made construction in there. Here are some pictures from Make a Difference Day. We have some students from our school who came out and helped us make this a great event. Now I'd like to turn the time over to James for the month of November.
For our, we had growing numbers at our Anthem K.A. We've been doing good at Florence. We wanted to do that at Anthem, too. So we want to get more people out for FTC and everything. We ran a successful sports half-day event, which we had a basketball, cornhole, and we had some music at the park. Then for our junior parada, we had members from the council, which we thank you guys for coming out in your time. We had the mayor and we also had our FTC, FTC members also come out. And here are some pictures. On your left, you see the float that we and the council put together. It was a pretty good float. We, once again, thank you guys for coming out. Then we have our basketball on the right, which was our cornhole basketball and music in the park. And it went very well. We're actually hoping we can do it again. And I would like to give this to Abby for the month of December.
In the month of December, we participated in the Christmas on Main Street parade. We made the float for the junior parada, which we also used for the Main Street event. We hosted our second annual holiday hoedown, which was hosted at the community center. And we also hosted our most successful half-day event, which was the kickball tournament. We had over 40 students come out and participate, and Sonic donated some waters for this event. And we got enough time to play two rounds of kickball. Here are some pictures. In the top-left corner is our kickball tournament. In the top-right corner is our junior parada parade float. And in the bottom picture is our holiday hoedown. Now, I would like to, I would like to give it over to Lolita Vazquez for upcoming events.
Hi, I'm Lolita Vazquez, and I'm here to talk about upcoming events for FTC. One of our upcoming events is our senior prom for our senior citizens. This event will be held March 10, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Another one of our upcoming events are, is our teen leadership symposium, which will be held Thursday, April 12. Our original date was February 24, but we had to change that due to Casa Grande doing their teen leadership symposium, same day. And I'm here to turn it over to Coco, our FTC advisor.
A question. Where is senior prom being held?
First of all, how good did the junior high school do today, huh? How good is that?
Amazing.
So, Councilmember Anderson, so the senior prom is going to be held at the same place where we had the holiday hoedown, so it's going to be held at the community center.
Good deal. Thank you.
If anyone has any questions about any of our past events or upcoming events, I'll be glad to answer them.
I don't think there's any questions, but I know there'll be a lot of comments, council. Would anybody like to go first?
I would like to thank the Florence Teen Council for decorating buildings and joining us on the float for both the junior parada and the Christmas on Main Street. We had a lot of fun, especially at Christmas, singing Christmas carols as we drove down the street.
I would like to just echo what you said and all the progress that you guys have made in the community and all the positive improvements they really do show, and we really appreciate everything you've done. So thank you again.
Well, I'd just like to thank the teen council as well as Parks and Rec. Seems like everything in town is sort of coming together really nice in the last year. We've had a lot of good programs going on, and everybody seems to have a good time at all these events, so thank you.
Coco, I'd just like to thank you for instilling such enthusiasm and professionalism and just generally a great time with all these students. Thank you so much. They're doing a great job.
You're more than welcome. And David Lewis has been very instrumental this year. We're making that transition from he to I, and so he's been very, very, very instrumental in moving us forward.
I would echo what everyone else has said and then compliment the teens on being willing and able to come and speak in front of a crowd. That's pretty scary for a lot of people, and you all did a great job.
And I would like to compliment the job you did on the haunted house. That was a real hit. That was packed. I mean, there was lines waiting outside to get in all night. I know you put in about a week or longer putting it together. Dave, I saw him numerous times down there working on it and the other teen council members, but yeah, that was a real hit.
You know what? I'm really impressed. Personally, David, you were a student of mine in third grade. I absolutely, really, really am impressed of how well, you know, you've grown and developed into the community, as well as some of the students, Jimmy, I've known you for how many years, since you were four or five years old, as well as some of the other students that I've taught. I'm just, how many of you, when you're grown up, can see yourselves as a council member or a mayor? Ah, I see some hands, yes! You're developing those skills now. You are our future. So the skills that you're developing and contributing to the community are so important, and I hope that you're really, you know, continuing to be involved in the community, and we appreciate everything that you're doing for the community. So thank you, and thank you, Coco, for guiding them and, and working with, you know, the staff and the children. So, and I love how it expands to both sides, you know, in our community, bringing everybody together as one, and that's been our ultimate goal and achievements, so.
And thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Item B is a presentation on an upcoming special event from February to July 2018. Not 17, 2018. Allison, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to update you on the events that we're going to be hosting from now, January until April. We have our Cornhole Cup, Home Tour, Munchen Music, Pooch Party, Easter Extravaganza, Road to Country Thunder, and Movie in the Park. These events listed here are just town-sponsored events. Cornhole Cup is going to be the Saturday at Padilla Park. Last year, we had it right next to the American Legion. We had 24 teams for that, and we're hoping for another good turnout this year. Saturday, February 10, is our 33rd Annual Historic Home Tour. This year's theme is an Arizona hidden treasure, so to play with the theme, we're going to be having a map, which will be the, it used to be a booklet, and this year it's going to be a tour guide map, so. And each house that's going to be on the tour, there's also a hidden treasure at each location, so we try to change it up every year, keep people coming back. We have eight homes on the tour, 18 total properties. We're going to be having three reenactments from the Maricopa High School Drama Club. Unfortunately, I think it was post, or Santan Valley foothills came last year, but they weren't going to be able to make it again this year. But it was such a big hit that we wanted to continue doing something, so we invited Maricopa High School to come out this year. We're also going to be having the quick draw. It's an actual, it's actually an artist drawing. A lot of people get that confused with guns, so it's a quick draw for artists, and we auction off their drawings later on in the day. We have a wine garden that's going to be presented by the Windmill Winery, and that's going to be at Padilla Park. And we have the Wild Horse and, Wild Horse and Borough inmate program. So they're going to be bringing out some burrows and horses and doing a presentation on the program that they have with the inmates and how they train the horses. And that's about it for the home tour. For Munchen Music, we have, the next one is, sorry, the next one is February 14, and we're going to be having the Post and Butte High School Orchestra come out for that. And I did find out they're going to be partnering with the Florence High School, either their choir group or band, to fill up the two-hour space. And we're also going to be having on March 14, Rusted Spur West. They're a local band here in town. All of the bands that we're getting for Munchen Music are free. We don't have to pay them anything. They are able to put out a tip jar and collect tips, but other than that, we are not paying them anything. Next is Pooch Party. We've had this event for years now. It's going to be from 9 to 11 at the Central Bark Park. And animal control comes out, offers vaccinations, licensing. They do that all right at, at the park, and we're happy to say that this year, $10,000 in improvements from the Pet Safe Bark for Your Park grant will be seen at the event. The Easter Extravaganza event is going to be Saturday, March 24. We're partnering again with the Mosaic Church. We've partnered with them the last two years and continuing that partnership. We're also partnering with the Penal County Mounted Posse, who's going to be doing the pancake breakfast, and we'll have 12,000 prize-filled eggs. It's pretty neat to see all the kids' baskets are overflowing with eggs, so I think it's plenty of eggs for that event. We also have rec FX, which are some backyard recreation games that the kids love. Those will be out there, inflatable's and pictures with the Easter bunny. The Road to Country Thunder event, we have a lot of partners for this event. It's pretty neat because it really takes the load off of our, just, you know, our Parks and Rec department. We partner with Country Thunder, KMLE, the Mounted Posse, the American Legion, the Chamber of Commerce. And then I'm excited to say that this year, EG's has reached out to us, and they're interested in partnering in the event as well. So they're really looking to promote the event, hand out marketing pamphlets at each of their restaurants, and going to be at the event. I don't know if you guys remember, last year Taco Bell was there and they did a little competition for the kids. EG's is also interested in doing something like that, but they might do it during the school, school days, so that there's some hype there for the event. The Movie in the Park, we're going to be showing Despicable Me on April 28. Teen Council will be doing some pre-show entertainment, and then they'll also be selling some popcorn, candy, and drinks as well, and then we'll also have some of our vendors there. So that is it for the town-sponsored events. You can also see the other events that we have. These are events that are going to be happening at the rodeo grounds. The Model Air Show is next to the rodeo ground, so that's why it's listed there. The Prison Run is February 11, the day after Home Tour. Queen Creek Junior Rodeo is actually at the rodeo grounds as well. Arizona High School Rodeo, March 31, and then the Ranch Rodeo is March 3. These are events that are at Anthem, Parkside, and Sun City. There's Arts in the Park, March, or February 3 and March 3. There's Spring Festival is March 10. The Anthem Triathlon, February 24, and then Arts in the Park again, April 7. And then here is some other events going on in town. The Assumption Parish Church Festival, that's the same day as Home Tour. The Classic Car Show is going to be hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and they're doing that February 17. Should be fun. It's going to be right on Main Street, so if you guys are around, you should check that out. Fashion Show is going to be at the Women's Club. Country Thunder, April 5 through the 8. The Dino Dash is at the Windmill, and then Little League's opening ceremonies will be at Heritage Park. And that is all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, so here's a funny. The Dino Dash. When I first read that, I was like, oh wow, you guys are bringing dinosaurs for the kids. You know, it's the goddess of wine, Dionysius. So it's the Dionysius Dash. Any council members want to run?
I just say Dino Dash because I'll say it wrong, so.
One other question for you, Ally. Are these dates on the town website?
I was just looking at that, and they should, for the most part, be on there, but there'll be some updates hopefully tomorrow as well. And the events that are non-town-sponsored events, they are not on the town website. But I'm, are they on the chamber website? Do you know? We have a listing of events, but they are not on the town website.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Can we add them for like, for community events? Yeah, I would think that we would find a spot to put those because they're community events.
If we can, I'm sure we can link them in some way so that we can promote them. Thank you.
Good suggestion. All right. Item C is our 2017 Annual Report from the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just before I bring Rodney up, I just wanted to say a few words about the chamber. They recently held board elections, and so their new chairperson, Wendy Yu, intended to be here this evening, but she was unable to make it. So their immediate past chair, Rodney Mendoza, is here to provide the report, so I'll ask him to come up now.
Mayor, members of the council, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I really want to give a shout, and I won't say a shout-out, but a thank you, really, to Karen Wall, because she has been at every one of our council meetings, and that means a lot to us at the Florence Chamber. We have board meetings that, you know, that she has taken the time to come there and listen to us and given us some really good input. The same with Jennifer, with her being there every time, giving us input, and also with the town manager is coming up with some great ideas for us to move forward with to even launch us even better than where we're going right now. We're going to talk about the annual report for the Florence Visitor Center and the McFarland State Historic Park. Those two areas have gone, have drawn a lot more visitors. There's a lot of things going on there that we're trying to get the word out. We're trying to draw more people into the town of Florence and let them know what we're about. From October 1 through May 31, we've started opening from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. The McFarland State Historic Park is on summer hours. It's from 9 a.m. to 2 p.m., which is very little people here that come during the summer. We try to gear up everything for the winter aspects. The Visitor Center provided access to public telephones, local calls, and drinking water and drinker information about the town of Florence. It's the little things like that that our winter guests really appreciate when they walk in, that they don't have to pay for making a phone call, a local thing, or watering, and things that we can do for them. New brochures have been added. The outside racks have been kept stocked, brochures that are available to visitors after hours. An annual Florence special event calendar was compiled and updated quarterly. Visitors. For our visitor centers this year, we had 6,089 visitors, and the visitor center had 2,108 visitors. So between the park visitors and the city and the visitor center visitors, we had 8,197 visitors. The difference between these two, the park visitors are actually the ones who take a tour. They actually go through the courthouse, they go through the grounds. The visitor center visitors, they actually come in, they look around, but they don't actually take a tour, but they come in, sign in, go to our gift shop, and then they leave. But they all get to experience what we have here. The first half of 2017 saw a little fewer park visitors than the previous year, but we're changing that because now we are starting to have actual events there. Every quarter, we are hosting something there to draw visitors in. Somebody's actually in the courtroom giving talks. Donations for the 2017 was $1,971. Promotional letters, marketing. Promotional letters were sent to regional RV parks in 55 and over communities. Plans have been discussed for more advertising opportunities. We're always seeking ways to draw more people down into our community, and we think by reaching out to some of the mobile parks in the area, the 55 and over communities are winter guests, sometimes they don't even know what's down here, but once they come, they're very pleasantly surprised. We're continuing working with the town and the state parks to make improvements and interest to draw guests. We're also this year for the Florence Chamber. We're holding our first, which will soon be annual car show downtown on Main Street. And what's great about this is what we've been trying to strive for is to bring people in from other parts of Arizona to our town. We've been able to reach out, and we have commitments from car shows in Casa Grande, Mesa, Phoenix, Apache Junction. They have committed to come down here and participate in our car show. And the ones I've talked to, for some reason, having been downtown in our area, and they were very excited that the town manager and the council is allowing us to have that on Main Street, to get to see these historic buildings and, and to step back in time a little bit. Also, Steve Miller, District 3 supervisor, he's put a challenge out to our town manager to see who's going to come out and win best in show at our car show, so I thought I'd let you know that. I saw him down at the Casa Grande show, and he'll be here at ours, too. The other things that we are doing this year is that we're going to hold a single de myro event, and I've been asked, unbelievably, when is that? I did the same thing. I laughed, I said, surely you just, but. We're also holding a casino night, which has always been very successful for us. Last year, we held, we made the most money we've made for that. We had the most people attend, and everybody had a great time. Last year, I think the, the theme was the 80s. Our junior parada activities that we're doing, we did a cornhole tournament last year. We're going to do it again this year. We had about 20 teams show up, and it was well-attended, too. The Florence Chamber of Commerce, the board members. Every time we have an election, we have four, five, six new members, and it seems like we have to start over every time. But this year, the town, the town manager's office to bring, to offer to bring us in a consultant so we can do a strategic planning, so then we have a succession set up for us, so then when we do bring in new members, they'll have a roadmap to follow, so then we can continue and grow stronger and stronger as we go down the road. And that's been lacking in the past. So with the town's leadership and with the community's leadership, I think we're going to see a greater Chamber of Florence Commerce in the future. Is there any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Who is the new director?
It's Wendy. And she works at the, just being the old harbor building, the office insurance, started her own insurance building up there, so. He was so close today, she gave me a call and asked me if I could come down here.
Okay, Wendy Yu, yes, okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is acceptance of Larry Puttrick's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item B is authorization to advertise Peter Villa Verde's vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority. Item C is approval of entering into a professional services agreement with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for calendar year 2018 in an amount not to exceed $45,000. Item D is authorization to suspend the town of Florence special event vendor permit rules for the Road to Country Thunder event to allow the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to coordinate vendors and collect vendor fees as a fundraiser during the Road to Country Thunder event on March 31, 2018. Item E, approval of the December 4, 2017, town council regular meeting minutes. And item F. And item F is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. November 9th and December 7th, 2017 Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, as your agenda, is there any member of council or public that would like anything removed at this time?
I'd like to have item A and item B removed.
Okay, I'll second that as well. Item A and B removed.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items A and B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and a motion carries. Item A, John.
I served on the planning and zoning with Larry Puttrick for years. Larry's been on planning and zoning for, gosh, I don't know, maybe 10 years. He's been an excellent representative for the town. He also serves on the county too. And I just can't say enough about Larry's participation. You know, he's always had the interest of Florence at heart. So that's, I just didn't want this to go through without being recognized. Same way with item B, Peter Villa Verde has been, you know, a cornerstone of this town for, I think he was probably born here. I don't know how far he goes back, but he's been a state legislator. He's been active in our community for years and years and years. He's been just a real Florence native kind of guy. And he's always tries to do the best for the town also. I just want to recognize those two guys.
Thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion that we approve item A and B of consent agenda.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and those motions carry. Item 8 is new business. Item A is appointment of board and commission members. The first is the reappointment of Ann Rankin and Ed Kirin to the Arts and Culture Commission with terms to expire December 31st, 2020. Second is the reappointment of Kathy Adam, Victoria Knight, and Debbie Novotny, Novotny, thank you very much for that, to the Historic District Advisory Commission with terms to expire December 31st, 2020. Three is the reappointment of Tom Smith to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31st, 2020. The fourth is the reappointment of Lonnie Frost and Robert Schmidt to the Planning and Zoning Commission with terms to expire December 31st, 2020. And the fifth is the appointment of Mike Chappell to the remainder of Larry Puttrick's vacated seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2018. Ms. Lisa Garcia, can we vote on these all at once or do they need to be done individually?
You can vote on them all at once as read by the mayor. And if you'd like to know, the clerk's office did advertise these positions from October through November and December. The applicants that you see on the agenda are the only that were received. We will re-advertise for the one opening on Industrial Development Authority. We will advertise for two openings on the Library Advisory Board. And we will advertise for one opening on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Those will be advertised, open until field.
Thank you very much. With that, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint and reappoint the individuals listed in the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item 9 is the manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I apologize for being a few minutes late tonight. We ran a little late on another meeting, so it took me a few minutes to get here. So I appreciate the fact that Lisa was here so that you could carry on without me till I could get here. First, I want to recognize Mr. Brian Smith, if you'd like to stand up. Brian is one of our interns. He's from Illinois State University and he's graduating in May. And he's interning with the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department. So welcome, Brian. You're here for two months? Till April 6th, so stop by and say hello to Brian and ask him how much he loves our weather as compared to Illinois this time of year. Second item, you may have noticed that our AV system's working great here tonight. Did you notice that? Since at the last meeting, we had a screen over there, we were projecting and your screens weren't working. I wanted to thank the IT staff and Trenton for all their hard work to do the upgrades that were necessary and change out the equipment to make sure that our AV system is top-notch here. So that was our first phase of improvements. As I understand it, there's a second phase that will be requested in the budget because we still have some challenges with, let's just say, infrastructure that's from different decades that we're trying to bring up to speed so that we make sure that it works seamlessly for the clerk and for the council. As usual, I have a letter I want to read into the record that I received. Says, "I just want to give a giant thank you to the guys at Station 2. My mom dropped her keys and all of her essentials down the storm drain in her neighborhood today. Your guys came out and retrieved them for her. She is 81 years old and mostly lives alone, and my brother is at least three hours away. I am all the way in Washington State, so I'm so grateful that she can get that kind of help when she needs it. We all try to be there for her, but sometimes it doesn't work out. You guys always say that's our job. This was above and beyond what I expected." So thank you to the fire department and the crews at Station 2. Lastly, I've got more good grant news. Drum roll, please.
What we like to hear.
We have been granted a grant for, wow, that was a little redundant. We have been given a grant to hire a new PM10 certified street sweeper, which is something we've been trying for, for three years. So it's on its way. And there are more announcements to come, I understand. But that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you. Can we say clean streets?
Yes.
Okay. And call to the public, this is our second call to the public. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? Closing call to the public, call to the council for current events only. And council member Larson.
I don't have anything for tonight, so it's a quick meeting. Let's take advantage of it and enjoy the rest of our night.
Council member Wall.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything exciting to report.
Council member Anderson.
I can't believe we're not saying anything. I want to get out of here. Thank you.
Council member Galen.
I do. I have a shout out to the Florence High School cheerleading team. I went to their state finals on Saturday night. And Florence All Girls Cheer Division III won state championship. Their five stunt team also won state championship. And I think they placed third in Palm, so we have an awesome cheer squad at Florence.
Yes, they do. Council member Hawkins.
Well, I'd just like to thank the members on the commissions and boards for stepping up to the base and participating. It's a real asset to the town. And it's really hard to get people to do it nowadays. And I just want you to know that the council appreciates all your hours and everything you do for us. It's a great asset and bless your heart for doing it. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Will Ridge.
Council member Hawkins took my thunder.
I did.
I know. I was just going to say thank you to all the people who keep signing on to be on our boards and commissions. We really appreciate it, so.
This may be one of the nights that everything has been said, so thank you for coming out. And I'm looking forward to all the exciting events in the town. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.